Three. Four. And five.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just have a question, again, we're referring to the June 2nd minutes?
June 2nd, yep.
I wonder if it is appropriate to list the alternate from the Selectmen's Board when he is not actually seated? He essentially is a member of the audience. I know he's in attendance, but he's not officially there in that capacity.
Did we mention him? Is that what you're saying?
Well, it's listed as members present. Right. He was, he's not seated, so I'm wondering if it's appropriate to list him there. That just never occurred to me before until now.
I don't know, I'd have to check the protocol. I honestly don't know.
We, in the past, we used to mention alternates.
I mean, that's what the protocol had been before, and then in the minutes themselves, there's always a notice if they're appointed to sit. But, I don't know.
I'll leave it as a question.
Yeah, it might, if, I'd suggest it might be more appropriate to list them, but to list it under others present.
Yeah, that's a.
Because if they're not seated members.
That's a good idea.
At that meeting.
Any alternates?
Right. Can we remember that?
Pardon?
We'll have to.
I'll have to work on rewiring my brain, but I'll.
Yeah, I have no problem with that.
Just like you say, just a question.
Yeah. All right, do we have a motion for the June 2nd minutes? Motion to accept the minutes or second?
I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
June 16th. So, page one. Two. Three. Four. Five. And six. Another motion?
Make a motion to accept the minutes as.
Second. Mr. Wilson, all those in favor of accepting the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I was staying since I was not present.
Okay.
All right, that brings us to correspondents? No?
Okay, correspondents. Hmm, no. I had an individual item for Mr. Kelly, but he's not here, and I have some notices, but they're oral, so.
I don't anticipate number six being that long unless, it'd be nice to go in order, we could skip if there's anything big that needs to be discussed. So, we'll go right through the committee assignments. We'll start off with the Board of Selectmen Liaison, Ray Gosney.
Just one thing to report on, since two weeks ago, the Board of Selectmen has continued its investigations into the additional expertise that we believe we should help us in exploring further what the solutions might be for the addition or replacement of police and fire facilities within the town. And we have gotten a fair amount of work done in the past couple of months, and there will be some announcements Monday night about decisions that the Board of Selectmen has made in moving forward with that initiative. That's pretty much it.
Conservation Commission, Mr. Wilson?
There's nothing to report tonight.
Zoning Board?
They did not meet last month, excuse me, in the beginning of this month because they had no items on the agenda.
Okay. The Water and Sewer District?
Nothing to report.
Pemmitchawsett Local River Advisory Committee? Mr. Kelly was, had some interest.
Right, right, and no one else has stepped up to the plate, so I'm going to go ahead and present his nomination papers to the board, and hopefully they will approve him and pass it on to DES. So he can be a fully fledged member by the end of this month when Perloc has its first meeting.
Newfoundland Lake Region Association? Plymouth Regional Emergency Management Committee?
I have not been to a meeting yet, and I was going to try to get to one, but.
Okay. Well, we have some for there, that's good.
Yeah.
Town Planner Report?
Just updates on the works in progress, as you know, because most of you are here, Plymouth Woods did pass its compliance hearing, so they are good to go. I met with Jeff Brown, I think it was last Friday, and we just discussed the construction schedule. The facility is being funded by a multiplicity of funders, state and federal, so it's a little complex. But, they expect to close, I believe, the first part of October, have their funding in place, and hopefully do a little bit of groundbreaking before they have to button out for the winter. So, that's progress. Tractor Supply, if anybody's been up there to take a look, that's coming, the great panel, what they call panel construction. And CVS is looking gorgeous, I don't know, just in the last couple of days, the facade's gone up, and so, you know, Plymouth is very lucky to have, I think, this kind of economic development going on, so.
Great. All right, item number seven, Mr. Mark Scarianno, Grafton County Economic Development Council Executive Director, and Mr. Bill Webb, GCEDC president? I don't know, he'll have to tell us what that stands for. Grafton County Economic Development Council President will speak on the planned conversion of the former Richelsons Building at 149 Main Street to a business incubator facility in conjunction with PSU. All right?
Make yourselves comfortable, you're welcome to, it's just us chickens, so if you'd like to sit up here, that'd be fine.
Nice to meet you.
Yep, we know each other.
Mr. Webb?
Nice to meet you.
Thank you for coming.
Yes, sure.
You should get it.
Yes, sir.
Microphone?
Everybody's got an incentive.
Thank you for seeing us. This is a, kind of a courtesy call on our, on our part, and it was suggested by Sharon, who we've spoken to, as well as Ray, who sits on the GCEDC's Board of Directors. Just a little bit about the GCEDC. We are, we were founded in 1997 as a result of a consolidation of economic development groups around Grafton County. The, at the time, these groups were not staffed and had different degrees of professionalism with their activities. And they all got together and realized that if they combined their resources, that they would have a critical mass to have greater impact on promoting and encouraging economic development, wealth creation, and job creation in Grafton County. So, we were actually founded along with other regional development corporations. You know, you're familiar with regional planning commissions in New Hampshire, we're kind of on the development side of regional development corporations. And there are 10 of us that collectively cover the state. We happen to cover Grafton County's area, and they are our namesake. There is a county-based operation up in Coles County, another one in Belknap County, and the others have assorted regions around the state. Some of them are multi-county, other ones are just regional in scope. And there's 10 of us, all of us have one thing in common, we all have a revolving loan fund in which we provide gap financing for businesses that can't find adequate financing in the, in the commercial realm. Oftentimes, commercial lenders will call us and say, for one reason or another, we're unable to provide 100% of the financing that a valued client of ours has sat. Would you mind coming in and providing the gap? And typically, that gap is anywhere between 25, 125,000, or in some cases, up to a half million dollars. So, all of us do that, and GCEDC, Grafton County Economic Development, has also extended itself into other areas of economic development. For instance, we have a business incubator in connection and cooperation with Dartmouth College and North Country Council. Business incubators are organizations that assist businesses typically during their first three years of business. As some of you might be familiar with the Small Business Administration, most businesses fail during the first three years of operation. Business incubators, which have programs of mentoring and networking for these businesses, can assist businesses survive that, that first heavy curve of evolving. And typically, around 87%, according to the National Business Incubation Association, of businesses that started in an incubator survive the first three years, which is almost the exact opposite of the businesses that fail without the assistance of a business incubator. Business incubation staff typically will sit down regularly with the business, there is handholding, there's mentoring, there's assistance on a myriad of business problems that may come up when someone is either starting or expanding their business. Networking is another important part of any business incubator, typically, it's networking with angel firms that provide startup equity-based injection into startups, and in some cases, larger amounts of money through venture capital firms. With our incubator in Lebanon, along with Dartmouth College and North Country Council, some of our incubator tenants have started up with $10 million in startup, some of them are much more than that. The, when GCEDC started to look at supporting entrepreneurism, and that's what a business incubator ultimately does, we wanted to combine and coordinate with a center of higher learning, just because of the resources that they can bring. The GCEDC is a small organization, but our motto is economic development through partnerships. And when we can work with a center of higher learning, like, for example, Dartmouth College, who are, as we're approaching you today, a partnership now with Plymouth State University, good things can happen. Business incubators not only provide that mentoring and networking, but they also, in many cases, provide space for business startups. And when you start to look, whether it be in the Upper Valley, or for that matter, in central New Hampshire, the availability of space, typically, I know with our Dartmouth incubator, we offer month-to-month leases. Those are very difficult to find for a startup business that needs flexibility. They also need certain types of spaces, and when you start to do an inventory of your own community, sometimes there isn't that type of space that's immediately available or has a variety of uses. So, business incubators will provide that real estate component as well. We're currently working with Plymouth State University, an arrangement in which we will own real estate, and they will provide mentoring and networking services for a full-fledged business incubation program. Plymouth State University has signed on to this, they are an active participant, and of course, this is just an extension of their current business assistance programs through the Small Business Institute, as well as, as well as their now College of Business Administration. So, we're very pleased to have Plymouth State on board, they're raring to go, and so are we. Of course, that brings us to our side of the partnership, which is the real estate concern. And Bill, why don't you discuss how we got to where we are?
We've got one picture floating, so let's.
Yeah, sorry.
We have copies for.
Good, that'd be great.
We, GCEDC received a grant through HUD about four years ago. For the specific purpose of either purchasing or dividing real estate or leasing real estate for incubation purposes. Initially, we were looking at the possibility of splitting personnel between two locations, one in Pennington, one in Bulletin, in order to make the sort of credit mass work for the overhead. But the more we approached it, the less that seemed easy to us, and we began to scale back the project a little bit, thinking that if we could start in a smaller way and get it going, that that was the better way to go. About the same time as we got to that conclusion, the property at 149 Main Street, the old Richelson property, became available. As you all know, it's been, it's been in the ownership of DOT for the last several years after they did the roundabout project, and they needed to take that for, for some expansion of that, that space. So, we've been working with DOT for a year, almost, a wonderful partner to work with, and we are, as we speak, within this distance to the closing. The only thing that's holding us up at the moment are a couple of final hoops that we need to go through with the federal government. As you all know, not everything is easy with the federal government, but we're just about there, and there's nothing that's on the horizon that will prevent us from going forward with this. So, I think Mark thought today that we may close as early as next, beginning of next week. We had actually hoped to close by the end of July. Our, our hope is to expand the building by adding a second floor. There's currently approximately 8,000 square feet, although half of that space is in, is in the basement. And that's usable space, but not fully usable in the sense of office space or retail space, because the ceilings are a little bit lower. So it has uses, but not completely usable for what we're looking at. So, our hope is to be able to put a second floor on that, which will give us a total of about 11,000 usable square feet. And the intent would be that on the first floor, which is the street floor, we would have at least one anchor tenant. The anchor tenant is designed to be a regular business that will pay regular rent to us, that will essentially cover our overhead costs, that will, that will allow us to, to operate the building on an ongoing basis. Some of the first floor space will be used for incubation purposes, and all of the second floor space will be used for incubation purposes. Included in the definition of incubation is some office space for Grafton County Economic Development Council, they may have an office for score, or other related services that would help startup businesses that have tenants there. There'll be common space, Plymouth State has, has been exploring ideas for some of the program work, for instance, one of the things they want to do is they have a very new but active program on sales, on not marketing, but sales. And Bob Meadow, who is the professor in, in that, wants to have a laboratory video space, they can actually videotape people doing sales presentations so that they can be critiqued, and they can see how they do that, and so forth and so on. So it'd be an interesting tool. They want to have a focus room where they would be able to get people together to sort of talk about new products and critique products and so forth. There's nothing of that sort more than Manchester and the State of New Hampshire, so they're looking at those kinds of things. There'd be common meeting space. That's one of the nice things about an incubator is that for tenants, they don't have to all be getting those kind of support spaces that you might have to get for your new business conference rooms, kitchens, and things of that sort, so that will all be part of that. We're intent on making this building a, something that Plymouth would be very proud of as a gateway building into the community. We recognize its location and feel that's a prime, prime candidate to be a showcase for the town. We are anxious to make this a green building, as energy efficient as, as we can, we would like it to be to lead standards, but not necessarily lead certified because of the extra cost that goes with the certification, but we would go with the standard anyway. So we're already working on some of those things. Is that right? And her program and others. In terms of funding, we've already been to the Selectmen a couple of times, we made it very clear to the Selectmen that we intend to pay taxes, as a, we are a nonprofit organization, but this is a, it's a legitimate space for business and retail, so it should be paying taxes. So that's part of our operating plan. We expect to own the building outright. We have the funds, as I said, to purchase the building, but the renovation of the building is going to be dependent on some funding that we are, we have applied for, or will be applying for. It's one of those processes that one depends on the other, but we have already applied for and received $500,000 worth of tax credits through the CDFAs, the State of New Hampshire. We are told that we were the number one project on their list, they really thought that this was a great project and had a lot of viability, so we were at the top. We have pre-sold 300,000 plus of those $500,000 that we have available, so we're very confident that we will be able to do that. I don't need to go into an explanation of that if you don't know it, but simply, this is an opportunity where businesses are able to buy credits against anticipated taxes, and essentially, 75, between 75 and 90% of the tax obligation that they may have will be able to be written off, and they'll get credits for that. So it's like, equivalent of giving, say, $10,000 worth of tax credits is the equivalent of giving maybe $1,500 in cash to your organization. It's a really great program that the state has, and as I said, we've already been able to pre-sell over $300,000 of credits, so we're well on our way. The second part of our funding, we expect, will be through Economic Development Agency at a federal level. We're submitting a grant request in September for $600,000. At least at the moment, that's our plan, still a little bit subject to some final figures coming in on estimates. The tax credit, the, the federal dollars require a match. In this case, Plymouth's in an area of, you know, would be a 60%, 40%, our match needs to be 40% of the total. So, that's what the tax credits will be used for, they will be our match to the federal dollars. So we, again, we had to go through certain steps. First was the anticipation of getting the tax credits, now we've got the tax credits, now we sell the tax credits, and those will be used to get the rest of the money. But we, everything's gone according to oil so far, and so we're pretty confident that we'll be able to do this. If all goes according to schedule, as I said, we should own the building within a matter of days. We'll say that we could have owned the building prior to this, but DOT has been very helpful and cooperative, we were, we were not sure whether the actual value of the building as owners might be useful as an asset for some kind of match in some of the funding that we were looking for. So, we were delaying that to make sure that we didn't own it prematurely and not be able to use it as a match. So they've been helpful on that. So we will own it shortly, and if we are successful, there may be a couple other grants that we'll be looking for, and we may need some support from the town, just to say that they're supportive of what we're doing. And we hope to have word on those funds by, I guess, maybe late October or November, if we have the cycle, and we'll be ready to start the work shortly after that. So that's, that's kind of the physical part of things in terms of the building. As Mark mentioned, PSU is working with us on a program piece, they've already designated one of their faculty members as a part-time interim director, who's already starting to work on conceptuals and program piece. It's anticipated that they'll have a regular full-time or designated person that's already on the faculty, so probably January or so. What, I think, what's your projected date?
Twenty of two thousand thirteen?
I think that's the outside. So that's kind of it in a nutshell. We wanted to make ourselves known in terms of what we're looking at, and what we hope to be able to produce for Plymouth, for the region, that building. You see the rendering, this is sort of what we think it might look like, and we just thought you might have some questions, or guidance?
Do you have any candidate, candidates now for occupancy?
For, well, I'll let Mark address that, we've got two different kinds of occupancies. We've got a tenant, the anchor tenant occupant, which would be actually a regular tenant, paying full rent, and then we have the incubator tenants. Mark can tell you.
And I was also curious as to what kinds of businesses, I, I know you probably don't want to give out their, their names at this point, but would this be retail, or service kinds of businesses, or is any of it manufacturing?
Well, no, I, I think it would be, in terms of the anchor tenant, you know, and, and the, just to build on what Bill's saying, these are people, the anchor tenant's going to be a long-term tenant who will pay bills to keep the operations going while the incubator clients upstairs, the client companies are coming and going, the cash flow aspect. But, we certainly want to be respectful of the fact that this is a Main Street location, and that having a, and obviously, within the zoning standards that are there, we anticipate an anchor tenant will fit within that. We have been approached by a couple businesses that are attracted by the foot traffic, the student foot traffic in particular, during the fall and the spring semesters. So, it's a very attractive spot. We had two businesses, what I would call qualified businesses, people that have a previous background in successfully running a type of operation, approach us to be anchor tenants for that space, it's a very attractive spot.
I just mentioned, the problem we're having is that when we're ready to be able to take them as anchor tenants, even if we could do something with the space that's there now, we're going to rip the roof off, that kind of makes it difficult.
Presumably, the tenant who is interested because of the foot traffic is a, is a retail tenant?
Yes, definitely would be retail oriented, it could be food, or it could be, you know, retail in terms of merchandise, but the type of thing you would want on a Main Street. We're not anticipating that it would be office space on the first floor.
Ms. Bishop?
Yeah, I have a question as far as parking, is PSU willing to let the businesses and your staffing use their parking area, because I don't see how.
No, there is no parking, the catastrophe's built on it, I mean, it's, it is what it is. Let me, let me just add one more thing to Paul's comment, we have been approached by a business that is interested in becoming a, a client, an incubator client, a person who is expanding their business. This would be a very good business to have as our first tenant, and, and we're working with that person, I know PSU is working with that person right now to assist them on their business planning, so, and they called us, oh, this is without a, an active outreach effort for the programs, but.
I'm sorry, we'll get to run it. I just want to also mention that one of the things about this, we're, we're actually calling this the Business Enterprise Center at Plymouth, and it's not just an incubator. We are, we are anxious to work with existing businesses and help them go to the next level of their business, because from an economic development viewpoint, whether a job is added to an existing business or created by a new business, it's a job. In some ways, adding to an existing business may be more stable, so we're anxious to help existing businesses as well as startup businesses, I'm sorry to.
No, no, I think that's an excellent point. In terms of parking, there is none, I know that there is none now for our current offices, which are right above Meredith Miller Savings Bank, and we lease from the town, the Green Street parking. That will be one option in there, PSU does have some space, and, but they've not made any decisions, certainly regarding parking. It's something that we're going to be addressing as we go through this process.
The other question I have too, because in your diagram, it doesn't really show the furniture store building, so I'm kind of like looking at it, and I'm wondering, and I don't remember if they're connected, they're separate.
There's an alleyway.
That's what I thought. That's what I thought. But yeah, I just didn't see it in the diagram. I was looking in there. And then my last. I didn't notice the architects, it was complete and this is pretty much the way it's going to be. And the reason why I say that is because when I'm looking at Main Street and you see all the brickwork, the bottom half looks awesome, you know, it goes fixing, but as you know, Meredith Village Savings and how they have the face brick and stuff. And I was just asking if that was finalized.
Well, nothing has been finalized.
It's like a mansard roof, which is.
It's metal, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, metal.
Yeah, but it's, the design is, it's got hips on it, so to speak.
I kind of like it.
I like it. I mean, it uses the snow.
Tom Salmon wanted to keep the facade as accurate as possible. I mean, it's only 1937, it's not an ancient building in High Town. But he did have an appreciation for the brick facade that's currently on one story side, so that has been unchanged.
Again, it is probably at this point a conceptual drawing. We have no interior plans yet, so it was more to give the, to convey the idea of a second floor. It's just what we have there.
This is nice, this atrium up there.
I just have two quick questions. First of, it's just going up, there's no expansion of the building footprint, right? Yeah, okay, I didn't think so. Right, I didn't think so. And further what Paul had mentioned, in future, the incubator spaces may be open to other business besides retail? I mean, it doesn't have to be a retail space with the incubator.
For incubator tenants on the second floor, no, they can be anything. The business that's approached us, that I mentioned to Paul, is not a retail business. It's actually a software business.
Right, so you guys are bad at any business that approaches you, yeah, okay.
In fact, I might say that it's unlikely that we would have any incubator tenants that are retail oriented. Maybe retail in the sense that they manufacture something.
Right.
Manufacturing stuff or any kind of.
Maybe selling the web or something.
But it's not like we're likely to have somebody that wants to start up a coffee shop and this is a startup.
Right, yeah.
It's more of a, it would be more of a business software.
Right. Thank you. I think it's a nice idea.
So, this is kind of the first of many conversations I'm sure we might have on this. And both, we wanted to be attentive and kind of start their relationship early. And Sharon's been great.
On this, for, you and I have been talking about this for quite some time.
Well, it's something that we've been.
Eight months or so, yeah. It's wonderful.
Yeah, we've come to the point where we identified that property and now we're coming to the point of closing on it and then we'll be to the point of renovating it and.
One of the great advantages of locating this property is that it's directly across the street from Plymouth State and the Business, College of Business Administration. And so, that ability to tap into those resources so easily and for them to be able to back and forth so easily is huge.
And also, everyone's probably noticed, you know, that, that end of town is going through some kind of independent upgrades, but your cumulative effect is wonderful. I mean, you know, some buildings have been brought up to spec and the restaurant convenience store has had some renovation and all the pieces are kind of interconnecting, which is great because it is the gateway, so.
You mentioned that in regards to the location of that, in our experience of our incubator that we have with Dartmouth College, we had a very successful company that actually grew out of the incubator. They just needed more space than we were physically able to provide. And so, they had to move out fast. So, many, this was a company called Mascoma Corporation, and they had come up with a yeast that made, yeast type of process that made ethanol from woody biomass. And of course, they were right on time for everything, renewable energies and high gas prices. And so, they needed 65,000 square feet of wet lab space. And there were other states that were offering them a lot of money, one of which was Vermont right next door. And the city of Lebanon, I had talked to the city manager at that time and saying, you know, things get weird, is there an opportunity to perhaps provide one of the lots up by the airport that they have? And you already have some biotechnology, biosciences companies up there, Striker Biotech and others that are pretty sizable, but you know, you might as well have been talking of moving Mascoma to Mars. It was so far away from them. It's only four miles away from the Centerra Business Park where our incubator is, but it was four miles away from the researchers, from the brains, from the students and the others, Dartmouth-Fitchcock Medical Center and all of the amenities that they like to be close to these high-tech businesses. So, we learned something from that, that you need to have your incubator close to the center of higher learning. And so, we had to go along with Bill's saying, absolutely.
Yes, we ought to just mention that we've had enormous success with our incubator in Lebanon. 35,000 square feet was the initial building, which is very large. It's a very different animal over there, obviously. The Upper Valley is very different than over here. We've had so much success there that we are now in the process of doubling the space. So, we have some experience, but we also know that this market is going to be a very different kind of place than the Upper Valley. So, we're looking at this in a very different way. Part of that leads us to want to do it in a smaller way to begin with and let it grow and see how it goes. But I think it's going to be a very exciting project. I think it'll be nice for Plymouth.
Have you noticed in your other incubators whether some of the tenants that you're helping will move into the community that's hosting this?
Well, Mark can speak directly to that, but conceptually, that's the point, is that we want these tenants to not only grow, but get out and then get out into the local area. It may not be in the exact community, depends, but one of the problems that we have and we may face is whether or not there's adequate space available. I think this has been an issue.
It's kind of a real issue over there because these are businesses that require wet lab space, which is typically more expensive construction. There's a limited capacity over there. Adding to the problem is that many of the funders of these businesses from the venture capital firms, many of them are in the Boston area and of course Cambridge has a pretty thriving biosciences sector of its own and it has an enormous availability of wet lab vacancies right now. So, there's challenges that the Upper Valley has. Typically, according to the National Business Incubation Association, 84% of businesses that graduate from an incubator stay in the immediate area. So, but that makes sense. That's, they've grown to the point where they have employees, where they have their garsetto and you just don't pick up and leave as easy as that, so.
And in Plymouth, the type of business that's likely to start here in this incubator is more likely to be involved with the individuals as opposed to these, some of these businesses that are in our incubator in Lebanon, as Mark said, they have $10 million or more in venture capital startup funds. That's significant and we're talking about a different animal there. So, I think that the likelihood of businesses that start here and are ready to move out, staying in the immediate area is pretty high. Certainly, that's one of the things we want to happen.
I think that means you folks are going to have challenges as planners as to where does new business growth go? How does that work with the demand, the powerful demand in the future? And we'd be happy to work with you on that. Where's the expansion for the town? And that's going to be of interest to us because we're going to be in the exact same position on perhaps a smaller scale here, just like we are over in the Upper Valley of scrambling to find locations for these businesses. That's a good problem to have, but it's also something that a community should be aware of and help to work with and plan ahead, so. Well, this is kind of like I say, the first introduction.
Thank you very much.
It's going to be changes. This may not exactly look like it is going to be, but we just want to say Sharon's been very nice to work with and very attentive.
This is very exciting. We're a very lucky town. Sometimes folks don't think so, but you know, we have a lot going on that's very positive and this is going to be more so.
So, we look forward to continuing communications. I suspect, as Mark said, this may not be exactly what it looks because you may have things that you want us to do. I think I have the conversation started.
Super. Mr. Gosman?
Couple of comments and an observation. The observation first, picking up on Sharon's comment, is to reflect on the outcome of the last, if you will, long-range plan that town undertook in 2008. When you looked at the infrastructure of the town, we indeed are somewhat blessed in that we are developing into a regional hub for a number of initiatives that include retail, that include health services. We're very fortunate that we've got a 25-bed regional hospital that is one of the classiest hospitals, not only in New Hampshire, but in the region. We're also very fortunate in that we've got a village district that Sharon is speaking to that is continuing to develop and becoming a hub that attracts people for a number of reasons, not only for retail. And the recent success of the Plymouth Regional Chamber of Commerce, who is one of those other organizations that has stepped up and looking to become one of the partners in this development of the Enterprise Center. It also recognizes that the town of Plymouth is one of the three identified beacon communities in the state of New Hampshire for moving forward with energy efficiency measures. And as Mr. Webb's already pointed out, they are working with Madeline, with the Better Buildings Program here in Plymouth to just identify opportunities such as working with New Hampshire Electric Co-op and some of the things that they can bring to the table as we look at this becoming, if you will, a showcase right there at the gateway as you come into Plymouth. So, it really is going to enhance our infrastructure here in Plymouth that helps to attract and retain businesses. It's just one more piece that you need of all of these various elements. And the Board of Selectmen is also very excited about the opportunity to be, again, a partner in whatever way that can materialize in moving forward with this.
Thanks, Ray. Thank you very much. I appreciate you informing us about what you're up to.
We'll be back.
I'm just going to, Mark, can I just speak to you for one second? What am I passing those out? These are the minutes for next time. The ones that I emailed you today, it's a first edit draft from our last two meetings, so you can just keep those as copies.
Any other?
They're all the same company.
Unfinished?
I'll give you guys two, you can use those.
Another business?
I got you. Straight copy, just straight from my house.
Oh.
You're right. Extra, extra stuff.
I don't think we have any public comments.
There's no public.
So, that brings us to item number 10.
Okay, good, Sharon.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all those, your favor?
Bye.
Bye.
Very much appreciated.